Okay, Mayor, I have the devices rolling and the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Good evening. It is Tuesday, March 9th, 2021. It is 5:30 PM. This is the regular meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council. This meeting is being held telephonically via teleconference pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020. This meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on Cable Channel 20 and also streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to assure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for this meeting. Thank you. And with that, I will ask the clerk to establish a quorum, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
I am present.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
And Mayor Heding?
Present. Thank you. And if we could just take a moment of silence to remember our fellow individuals in our county, now 248 deaths, those that have passed due to COVID-19, in our own way, just remembering those individuals. Thank you. Thank you. And if we could have the flag on the screen, go ahead and have the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And with that, I'll ask our city attorney, Chris Newmeyer, do we have a closed session report, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No closed session items to report tonight.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. That will move us to Mayor and councilmembers' reports. Let's go ahead and start with Councilmember Heller. Any community reports this evening, sir?
Yeah, I do have a report regarding the latest and greatest legislation on the Sacramento relative to climate change in reducing greenhouse gases, one of which is methane that is given off by organic waste. The legislation is SB 1383, I believe. The Integrated Waste Management Authority will be giving a presentation to council in the very near future. It's fairly complex legislation, which is going to be challenging to administer, but it's also very exciting if you're interested in reducing greenhouse gases. So that is coming up soon. That's all I have. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you for that report. I appreciate that. Councilmember Davis, sir, any report this evening?
Yes, thank you. Tonight, I want to recognize two of our special Morro Bay citizens, Cal and Charlene Nishinaka. Cal and Char have been helping their neighbors sign up for COVID vaccinations. They call around and find out who's eligible and have not yet been vaccinated. Then they get online every week and make appointments. So I want to thank you both, Cal and Charlene, for your unselfish support for your friends and neighbors. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis, for that excellent recognition. And let's move to Councilmember Barton, please. Any announcements this evening?
Yes, I attended an interesting webinar last week that had to do, it was put on by an organization called Strong Towns, and it had to do with strategies for growing entrepreneurs in your city. So I thought that was a very interesting webinar. And then today, I attended a Spanish-language COVID outreach meeting. And that, again, was very interesting. There was a Farm Bureau representative there, and lots of questions had been sent in ahead of him. So that was a very interesting meeting, too.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Addis, please.
I do have a number of reports. I was able to go out to Questa when the governor visited, and it was such a pleasure to see the Morro Bay Fire Department out there. And I wanted to say a special thank you to Dr. Bornstein, as well as Questa President and Superintendent, Dr. Jill Stern, and the county supervisors who were there, along with a couple of city mayors. And the governor, I'm sure you've heard him on the radio, saying it's not just a bright light at the end of the tunnel, it's a very bright light at the end of the tunnel. And vaccines are starting to open up for teachers and education staff. So I'm excited to be in that rotation and very much looking forward to going to the movies at the Morro Bay Theater, which has posted that it's going to be showing a film in the next few days here. And I know there have been a lot of questions about the theater, but the films are starting. So for those of you that are ready to wear a mask in the theater and have been vaccinated and excited to get out, I hope I'll see you there soon. I also wanted to share that Morro Bay High School is welcoming students back in-person school-wide on Monday. Delmar has been back. I think they're in their second week in-person school-wide. So if you know a teacher or a school administrator at Morro Bay High, please make sure to tell them thank you because they've been working incredibly hard. And school will be starting for some kids as early as 7:00 AM, getting out before lunchtime. And then a second session will be offered for those that stay in distance learning. But you can expect more traffic going to the Morro Bay High School. And then I attended HAB earlier this week, or the end of last week, I guess it was. Junior Yacht Club is having some events. Crab fishing is still very much impacted. So if you can buy other kinds of fish from local fishermen, that would be helpful. And they are doing a robust outreach effort to connect with different entities across the community. And then I'm going to be hosting three events. One is on March 22nd as the Morro Bay liaison to the We Are the Care Initiative. We're going to have Child Care Chat on March 22nd from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. And it's really to share what is happening here on the coast with childcare and to get feedback from the community about what's needed in the area of early care. And then on March 25th, I will be moderating Building an Inclusive and Intimidation-Free Democracy. And that is going to focus on how can we better engage in democracy with a reduction in threats to local officials as well as people who run for office. And both of those can be found online, social media, Dawn Addis, City Council. And then on April 5th, I will be hosting the congressman as part of Afternoons with Addis. And he'll be talking about local issues, and that will also be at 5:30 PM. So hope to see all of you there. And thank you so much, Mayor.
Any reports? Councilmember Addis, you have been busy, and that is great news about our schools. I think instead of Back to School Night, they're going to have Back to School Month, most likely. They've been gone for so long. I know my grandkids are excited to get back. And I'm so glad to hear that our teachers and staff are getting vaccinated in the schools. So thanks for that report and all the good work you're doing. With that, I'll give you, first of all, an update on COVID-19. Indeed, as Councilmember Addis mentioned, we are, I believe, turning the corner on COVID with some very positive trends. And as of the 9th of this month, the county of San Luis Obispo has had 19,927 cases in our county. We have moved from Tier 1 to Tier 2. Thusly, Councilmember Addis's comments about the movies are opening up. I'm excited to go to the movies. I really am. A number of our businesses are able to reopen with limited capacity. And I'm so excited about that and the fact that we have been able to enjoy some positive number changes that allowed us to move into that tier. In our county, we have trended down significantly in our case rate. As of this week, we're at a case rate of 5.7 per 100,000 individuals. And if you look back, we haven't been below 10 since the 1st of November of last year. So this is a significant change. We maxed out around the 11th of January at a case rate per 100,000 of 46. And again, we are down to 5.7. We have 15 individuals in the hospital with COVID, five in the intensive care unit, fortunately, significant capacity in ICU should be needed. Unfortunately, as I mentioned previously, there have been 248 deaths in our county as of today due to COVID-19. I think one of the biggest numbers is the total cases by month. If you just look back to the month of January, we had 7,437 new cases in San Luis Obispo County. And in February, that was down to 1,853. So cases, case rates, and case intensity is declining significantly in our county. And that is very exciting. Our 14-day average is back to the levels we saw way back in July of last year. And so all positive trends with regard to where we're moving in the county. Vaccines, as Councilmember Addis mentioned, the schools are receiving vaccines, and we're vaccinating our educators and staff, and that is exciting. In San Luis Obispo County, we've had, to date, 65,650 vaccines shipped to our county. And 56,000 of those have been administered to individuals as first and second doses. The amount of vaccines coming in the county is increasing significantly from just two or three weeks ago, when I reported that we were receiving only about 900 doses for the week. We're now up to several thousand doses per week. All three clinics are active, Aurora Grande, Paso Robles, as well as the Questa College site. And they are open five days a week. If you are looking to make an appointment, the appointment system has changed from Thursday mornings only at 9:00 AM to you now have, whereas you now have the opportunity to go online at readyslow.org. And if you are within, or if you meet the criteria for vaccination, you can sign up, and they will put you basically in the system and call you for your appointment. And I understand the average turnaround return call for first appointments is about four to five days, which is exciting news. If you need help with navigating the system, thank you, Councilmember Davis, for mentioning a couple of individuals. I'm sure you could email Councilmember Davis, and he could link you up with those folks that would help you navigate the system. But again, it's readyslow.org, and you simply click on the right-hand side for Vaccine Appointment Reservations. We are now vaccinating not only Phase 1A, which is healthcare and community, healthcare workers, long-term care residents and staff, but also individuals age 65 and older, frontline workers in education and childcare, as mentioned. And soon, other areas will open up for vaccination. The other good news, and I'll end on this, is that a number of our retail pharmacies in the county are seeing increased vaccine availability. And so if you aren't able to get through the system, through the county to get vaccinated, and you are eligible, contact your local pharmacy. There's a good chance you may be able to get a dose of vaccine there. I will close with this. It is estimated now, with the increase in production of vaccines and availability of the Johnson &amp; Johnson single-dose vaccine, that there's a very high probability that a majority of individuals, and that is 65% of the population or greater, can and will be vaccinated by May or June. And that vaccines will be available for all groups of individuals who desire them, most likely by May. And I reported at the last meeting that that probably wasn't going to occur until July. So thanks to the federal government and our state government for moving up distribution and availability of vaccines. And this is exciting. However, continue, please, even if you've been vaccinated, wear a mask, continue to socially distance yourself from individuals, and be careful that you don't gather in groups of two different family groups together. And if you do, preferably that should be outside. So thank you for that. All good news with regard to COVID-19 and the way we're heading, especially in our state and locale. With that, I will move to the report by our esteemed city manager, Mr. Collins, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And just briefly, sort of tagging on the good news with COVID-19, obviously cautiously guarded in that, you know, thanks to turn, as we've experienced. But at the level, at the federal level, we're anticipating that the American Rescue Plan Act will move forward through the House this week and potentially land on the president's desk by weekend. And there's a lot of, a lot of stuff in there, so we encourage folks to do their research online. But in short, what it means is that there is actual funds for local governments, and specifically those under $50,000 called out. This will be administered through the state, but Morro Bay is anticipating $1.98 million in relief funds to be split over two payments a year apart. So I think our first allotment would come sometime in June this year, potentially. Again, $1.98 million. There's a pretty wide use of those funds. We're doing more research about that. But it could include not only helping to backfill our loss of revenues, but also supporting local businesses or infrastructure projects. So, you know, some really good news to accompany what the mayor stated earlier. So that's all for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. That is good news indeed. We're looking forward to getting some reimbursement for all of the expenses we've had for COVID-19. With that, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment, general public comment for items on the agenda for which you cannot stay, or items that you'd like to speak to generally in the community involving our community or council. The clerk has put on the screen how to access public comment. You may do that through the Zoom link noted on the first part of the public comment notice, and/or you may call by phone. Be sure to press 9 if you call by phone, to raise your hand to be recognized, or use the raised hand feature in Zoom if you are linking in via Zoom. So with that, I'll go ahead and open up public comment and ask Anthony, do we have anybody in the queue for general public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Okay. Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
With that, I will close public comment to item A on the agenda. This is the consent agenda. I will go ahead and open up public comment for the consent agenda. Any member of the public wishing to speak on any items on the consent agenda, public comment is now open. And again, Anthony, do we have any public comment for the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Great. Thank you. I will go ahead and close public comment for the consent agenda and entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Addis to approve the consent agenda, second by Councilmember Barton. Any discussion? If not, I'll ask the clerk for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yeah.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes.
Thank you for that. That brings us to item number B-1. This is a public hearing. And as per the usual protocol, council, I will ask the staff to go ahead and give the presentation and allow council questions. Then I will open up the public hearing, open public comment. After receiving public comment, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then we'll move to council discussion and/or recommendations. So this is item B-1 on the agenda this evening. And this is a public hearing. This is the review and adoption of the final funding recommendations for the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Scott Graham, our Community Development Director. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Mayor Heding, a member of the council. We will turn the presentation over to Cindy Jason, our senior planner. Cindy, take it away.
Thank you. And thank you, members of the council. I will share my screen here. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation for you all. So this is the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program year. And the idea for you tonight is to review and consider final funding recommendations. It was at the November 17th City Council meeting that the council made draft funding recommendations on this program. And just to give you a little bit of background, the city participates with the Urban County Consortium, which is a group of county cities, as well as the county, for annual federal entitlement funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city's allocation for this program year is approximately $93,000. And though every year, the city is required to make both draft and final funding recommendations that also include public review and input on needs in the community. Those draft funding recommendations were made by council on November 17th, and recommendations were forwarded to the county board of supervisors. Those draft funding recommendations are put into a 2021 action plan, and that action plan included a 30-day public comment period. The two items being recommended for approval as the final funding recommendations are the Morro Bay Family Apartments Project, which is, the applicant is the San Luis Obispo Nonprofit Housing Corporation. That would be a 35-unit apartment complex, apartment project, excuse me, located at 405 Atascadero Road for $81,129. And then the second project that City Council approved in its draft funding recommendations is People's Self-Help Housing Supportive Housing Program. And this would be to provide and provide existing, provide and enhance existing supportive services. There are four existing affordable rental developments that are managed by People's Self-Help Housing that provide affordable housing for low-income seniors. And this amount that they requested, and that was recommended, is $8,637. And staff's recommendation is that the council adopt these as final funding recommendations. You will see that on the previous screen, there were two other applications that were received for funding. These were not recommended for funding because they didn't meet county and federal HUD program criteria. And so it is just the first two on the screen there. The recommendation is for these two housing projects. It is consistent with city goals to support and enhance affordable housing. And this also includes a request for administrative costs as allowed by HUD in our county agreement, which is the $4,190 amount that you see. And that, in total, equals our 2021 funding allocation. And then the staff recommendation also includes the ability to authorize the city manager to make pro-rata adjustments should there be any HUD budgetary changes. And we are expecting that final amount, frankly, any day now, from HUD. It typically comes on early March. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Cindy. Very much appreciated. And just as a reminder, council, this was reviewed at the November 17th, 2020 meeting. And these are the recommendations that we made and are coming back to us now. So with that, I will go ahead and open it up if there are any council questions. Councilmember Addis, any questions?
I asked my question. The staff and the two were about timeline, as well as how many school-aged children we expect. And maybe if you can just share that with the public, I think that will be of interest.
Sure. Are you referring to children at the 405 Atascadero project?
Yes.
Okay. That was not disclosed in the block grant application. It's, the funding is really to help assist with the development of the project. And...
We did reach out to Haslow on the project, Councilmember Addis, and the response back was they're estimating 27 children will be associated with that development.
Thank you. And then just the general timeline, when we would expect to see folks out there. I think that was of interest.
Occupancies anticipated. We got that from them as well in 2023, so probably towards the beginning of 2023, based on how things are lining up. But again, some of that is predicated on tax credit financing and their ability to be successful in this round. If they're successful in this round, then that's probably what it'll be. If they're not, then they'll go through the next round, and it'll be pushed back a little bit, I guess.
Thank you.
Sure.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Councilmember Barton, any questions?
No questions, but I did have a comment. I'm pleased to see how the city has found a way to maximize their dollars in working with the county and the nonprofits. It's a good way, because it's not, we don't get that much money. And so it's nice to have the working relationships with the others to make it turn into projects. So thank you.
Absolutely. Yes. Thank you. Councilmember Heller, sir, any questions?
Yeah, Cindy, thank you for the report. Now, is this federal money that's administered by the county, or what is the source of funds?
It is federal money. The county is the grantee from HUD. And the Urban County Consortium is just really the name that refers to that partnership that the county has with all of the cities, since the cities on their own would not be eligible to be an entitlement city. So we do that as a partnership.
Okay. That's my only question. Thank you, Mayor.
I bet. Absolutely. Thank you. And Councilmember Davis, sir, any questions?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. And I have no questions. We'll go ahead and open up public comment. I'll open up the public hearing and move to public comment. This is public comment for item B-1 on the agenda. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this specific item, please either raise your hand if you're calling in by using the 9 on your phone, or pressing the raise hand button if you're calling, or if you're in via Zoom. So Anthony, any public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. With that, I will close public comment, close the public hearing. With that, I will close public comment, close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to council and entertain a motion. I move staff recommendation. That's a tie.
I'll second.
A motion by council member, I'm going to give it to Councilmember Addis for moving the staff recommendation, second by Councilmember Davis. And any further discussion on that? If not, we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yeah.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you for that. And again, Cindy, thank you so much. Appreciate your presentation and excellent work on this. And that brings us, folks, you bet, to item C dash one. This is our first business item this evening. This is presentation and discussion of the fiscal year 2019-2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And we do have Ms. Vanessa Burke with us from the Poon Group, our auditors with us this evening. But I will turn it over to our interim Finance Director, Katie Lipton. And I'll have you kick it off, Katie. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor and councilmembers. It's a pleasure for me to be here this evening to kick off the presentation about our annual financial reports to you. They're comprehensive. They include all of the funds in the city. And we have a clean audit, which I am very pleased to report to you. That's been the case for the last number of years. And I really want to take this opportunity to thank the finance staff for all their hard work throughout the years to make that happen. This is the financial reports for the period ending June of last year of 2020. And so the work that was done was over the time period from July 1st of 2019 through June 30th of 2020. I want to give a special shout-out to Sandy Martin, who is our accounting and budget manager, who takes the lead on this effort. Her meticulousness in keeping the records throughout the year and then her interactions with the auditors really help us to pave the way for a clean audit. You will note in the audit that there is a fair amount of focus on the general fund, although all of our funds are covered in this. And I'm sure Vanessa will talk through the the single audit, which is a federal requirement. And we're in the process of finishing that, but we're not yet finished with that. It's not required to be part of the comprehensive annual financial reports that are part of what's before you tonight. The general fund has been on a difficult journey, if you will, in terms of managing the impacts of COVID and getting on stable financial footing as it relates to our revenue and expenditure growth. And I'm pleased to say that with the passage of Measure E and some very strong financial stewardship of the staff and the council, I believe that we're on the right path to get in a little bit calmer waters, if you will. But that's not our focus tonight. Our focus is looking backwards to the fiscal year ending on June 30th of last year. And I think on that note, I'll turn it over to Vanessa, who will walk you through the document. They're independent auditors. We don't get very much opportunity to sway them one way or another. And that's the way it ought to be. And I think that they, she can attest to the fact that they are independent and working in the best interests of transparency and financial stewardship and stability. So on that note, I'll turn it over to Vanessa.
Good. Thank you, Katie, and thank you, Vanessa, for being here this evening.
Thank you so much, Katie, for the great introduction. And Mayor, City Council, and others in the room, it's a real pleasure. I wish I was in Morro Bay today because it's a beautiful place to be. I'm actually sitting in Sacramento in our, my home office here. But with this new COVID normal, that's how we're doing these meetings these days. But hopefully, soon, we'll be able to not only get into your theaters, which I was hearing is opening up. So I'm really excited about that, but also come in person to meet with you. And I think I'm going to share a brief PowerPoint tonight, and I'm hoping everybody can see that on their screen, which I will walk...
Coming through loud and clear, absolutely.
Is that okay? All right, very good, very good. So really, the presentation I'm going to go through tonight is going to be a little bit more of a condensed presentation. We did present the results of the audit on January 19th to the CFAC, and we did a full report there and had, of course, lengthy dialogue with the members of the committee. And that is a very excellent process that you have in place. Not very many cities have that. So I applaud you that we have that opportunity to have those conversations and discussions. And so with, I think that with that, I'm going to keep this as brief as possible. I know you've had the report in your possession for some time. And so we'll get through this pretty quickly on just kind of my prepared remarks, and then I'll open it up at the end. As you, as Katie mentioned, this is June 30th of 2020. It's for the fiscal year ending then. And, you know, on March 20th, we all went into shelter and place. So really, this financial statement that you're seeing really has kind of some of those immediate effects. And that COVID affected us as well in your audit because we had to kind of oscillate between, were we going to be onsite? Were we in as we normally would be? Would we have a team working remotely, or we would do some type of hybrid? And in your case, we worked in an off-site mode, which is not unusual for us. But I do want to say again, thanks to all of your staff, as well as finance staff and Sandy, because it's a real transition on their side to have to give us everything electronically. So with that, let me see if I can page down here. Very good. So briefly, I'll go through what our scope of work is, just as kind of a quick reminder. We do do an engagement letter with the city, and it outlines all of that. But I summarize it here so you know really kind of how broad our scope is, or how limited it is in the audit. We'll talk about audit responsibilities. I'll quickly go through an overview of the financials. We'll talk about some key financial indicators and pension information. The audit results, which Katie already gave you that, which was, is an unmodified opinion. And then at the end, I'll open it up to questions. So for scope of work, so our scope of work includes not only the audit, the financial audit of the city, of the city's comprehensive annual financial statement for the fiscal year. It includes other elements that you have, which is your compliance audits for your Transportation Development Act funds. Those are also on a fiscal year-end, and that includes your LTF funds for roads. Your Transit Enterprise Fund gets audited separately from the comprehensive annual financial statement. Your local transportation fund for any non-transit or bike path funds. And at the time we presented in January to the CFAC, we were in progress in completing those. I'm pleased to present these to you tonight, that those have all been completed and filed, and there were no findings related to that. The single audit typically has a due date of nine months after fiscal year end. So that would be March 31st. And really is required when your federal expenditures exceed $750,000 in one year. Yours definitely do. And the grant that we're auditing this year is, been identified as your major, major program, which is the Water Infrastructure and Innovations Act Credit Agreement, WIFIA. We're in the process of finalizing that. And just to talk a little bit about why this is not with the report today, normally it would be. But because of COVID, the OMB, federal government, delayed issuance of guidance related to COVID-19 grants and funding. They didn't release that information until December 22nd, right at Christmas time. It was our Christmas gift. And so we had to really evaluate that and its impact on all of our clients. And really, we're working on getting all of the CARES Act grants audited under those new guidance, as well as any traditional-type federal awards. But at this point, we're finalizing, we anticipate we're still going to meet that March 31st deadline that is set federally. Quickly, I'll talk about audit responsibilities. On the next two slides are split between management's responsibilities and auditor's responsibilities. Really, the document that you have in front of you is about 200 pages in total. We do assist Sandy and all the finance staff with kind of compiling that report and the information. But in professional standards, the way they delineate our responsibilities are as follows. Management's really responsible for those financial statements and presenting them in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles in the United States. And in the case of city and governments, that, those standards and those principles are established by the GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And that's what we follow for your reporting methods within the financial statements. Next is to adopt sound accounting policies. If you were to read any footnotes in the financial statements, footnote one describes those accounting policies. So we do look and we do opine on whether those are sound and consistent in the industry. Establish and maintaining internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. And I like to throw in there fraud, because those controls need to prevent and detect fraud. And then last is providing evidence to us to support the amount in the disclosures and the financial statements. That's a heavy lift. We use a portal to do that. There's hundreds of documents that come into our repository and get looked at as part of our audit. And if it wasn't for your staff scanning and uploading all of those, we wouldn't be here today. Auditor's responsibility. So our audit is to perform the audit in conformity with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States and what I would call government auditing standards. In the lay term, that's referred to as the yellow book. The government auditing standards is issued at federal level. And because you're a government, you are subject to those standards. Our responsibilities also include communicating annually to those charged with governance, which includes you, the city council. We do include CFAC in that, as well as to management. Last is, we assess based on audit risk. We take a look at your audit risk as an organization overall. We do perform a risk-based audit. And we look at your internal controls for purposes of designing those procedures, but not for reporting on the internal controls. We look at it from that context. We don't test for operating effectiveness or efficiency unless we plan to rely on those controls in our process. And if anything were to come to our attention during that, we would bring any significant deficiencies or findings to the attention of those charged with governance. Last, we determine fairness in the presentation of the financials, looking at that reporting framework. And we render our audit opinions. So quickly, I will talk about the overview of the financial statements. In front of you, that 200-page book is a comprehensive annual financial report. And as you all know, producing a comprehensive annual financial report is an option. The city chooses to do it so that they can receive the award for financial excellence and have done that for many, many years. So there are sections that are required as part of that filing with the government, the GFOA, which includes an introductory section, the financial section, and then supplemental information. If you weren't to, if you weren't filing for that award, you would exclude the introductory section and some of the supplementary statistical data that is on the next page. But really, the basis and the focus of the audit is on the financial section. That's the section that's audited. I'd like to point out the second bullet under the financial section is the management's discussion and analysis. That's required supplementary information. That is unaudited. But we do take a look at that information and compare it to the audited financial statements to ensure it's consistent. If you were to read anything in the document, that is your lay version. And I may reference a couple pages tonight in that. That is the lay, shortened, condensed, concise summary of really the story of the city during, financial story during the last fiscal year. And is really where I point people so that it's understandable. The statistical section, however, is also unaudited, but includes really important information such as financial trends, revenue capacity, debt capacity, your demographic and economic, as well as operating information. And I like that information because it shows us trends and patterns experienced by the city over time. So next, I'm really going to be focusing on the city government-wide financial statements. The city produces government-wide financial statements on a full accrual basis, which means all of the city's long-term obligations, as well as its long-term or capital assets and infrastructure are included in these financial statements and under our GASB 34 framework. And so this really is the overall picture of the city, including those. As you can see here, your total net position at the end of the year is $161.3 million. That's an increase over the prior year of $7.3 million. And within that, you can see there are two separate columns, governmental activities and the business-type activities. So your water and your sewer and all your business-type activities are in that column. And then your more governmental activities are in the left-hand column. Your government, your business-type activities increased over the prior year by $9.5 million. And that's primarily due to the WRF surcharge that was implemented in the current year, in that fiscal year, for water and sewer, as well as loan draws that were taken from the EPA for your project. The governmental activities ended the year with $113.1 million total net position. That was a decline of $2.2 million over the prior year. And again, as I started the presentation, we were several months into the start of COVID. So if you read through the management's discussion analysis, you'll see that there are impacts from that, such as the reduced TOT tax, reduced recreation permitting, plan fees, and various revenue sources, as well as there were some additional investments made, such as the one-time payment to CalPERS to eliminate and the buyer side fund that was there, and retroactive changes to pay. The deferred outflow of resources of $8.8 million and deferred inflow of $2.5, almost, yeah, $2.5 million. Those are pension and OPEB-related deferred outflows and inflows related to GASB 68 and 75. Overall, your long-term liabilities increased by about $1.2 million to $4.4 million, and that was due to the new EPA loan. And with that, capital assets, I did want to point out in the asset section, increased, nearly doubled in your CIP, which was primarily due to the city-owned reclamation project. And there's some detail that's provided on that on page 15. And if you want more detailed explanations on the changes in the accounts, page seven of the audited financial statement will provide more detail. The statement of activities on a government-wide basis, we talked about overall, your change in net position. It increased $7.3 million. You can see the $9.5 million from the business-type activities and the decrease of $2.2 in the governmental that I described above. And really, the statement of activities is really all transactions that occurred on a government-wide basis from July 1 through June 30. Next is really just a focus. We would like to point out the general fund, since that is really the all-encompassing fund of the city and how it operated during the year and ended. This is a general fund balance sheet condensed as of June 30th of 2020. Total assets were $8.8 million. Total liabilities were $1.4 million, leaving a total fund balance of $7.3 million. That has a decrease over the prior year of about $1.4 million. Almost exclusively, that decrease occurred in the unassigned fund balance, again, from those impacts from COVID in the revenue and expenses, as I discussed on the prior slide. And then your general fund statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balances, all the transactions of the general fund isolated by itself. Total revenues were $12.8 million. Expenditures were $14.8 million for a revenue, expenditures over revenue of $2.2 million. And then you had some transfers that came into the general fund for operating and other purposes. And that resulted in a net change of fund balance of $1.4 million. So in looking back at that government-wide financial statement, if you were to look at that page, we'd like to present to you essentially the net cost of services of the city to the tax revenues. And what the net cost of services represents is all of your expenses in both your government, in your government... and in your governmental activities. And we also display business-type activities, but we think it's more important to show here on this slide, the governmental activities, so that you can see whether, how much your tax revenues are coming in to support those costs. So overall, you can see that your net cost of services was 13.6 million. Tax revenues coming in this year was 10.3 million for a net change of 2.2 million that we talked about previously on the governmental activities. So really, your net cost of services currently to tax revenue is about 132%. The, the, this does not include, this picture does not include your investment earnings, any miscellaneous revenue or transfers in there, which would add an additional 1.1 million to the total revenues to tie back to the government-wide financial statements. Next page is your unassigned fund balance. Page 13 of the annual financial statement provides the details of the unassigned fund balance of 3.3 million. And we put a chart in this year in the MDNA so that it was better, more understandable and more transparent. We do like to take a look as a factor at the unassigned fund balance as compared to the annual expenditures in the general fund of 14.8 million to see what that ratio looks like. And so you're sitting at around 22%. The GFOA always has recommended find two months of unassigned fund aside and contingency or 16.67%. So you're definitely above that benchmark, but that's something I know that management is tracking internally and looking at. So you're definitely within the limit as we continue to march through. It's just a cognizance of. Slides are going to be on your pension numbers and your OPEB numbers, which drive the financial statement from a wide basis. These are in the long-term liabilities. And under the pen, got you.
Vanessa, we're having a little difficulty. You're cutting in and out, and you're frozen now.
You can see on page 23 of the financial statements within the non-current liabilities. So pension amount recorded is 25. That number would grow pretty sizably to 39.9. I know they had made changes, account rates, and they're smoothing that in over time. We don't anticipate that's going to happen. Any look at that?
Mr. Mayor, I just texted Vanessa to see if she's aware that she's breaking up, so.
Thanks. Thanks, Katie.
No problem. Now she's frozen.
Frozen, hang on. Can you hear me now?
Yes, appreciate that. Yes.
Is that better?
Yeah, we didn't get anything on that last pension standard.
Back on that slide.
Yes, please.
On sliding, sliding.
That one, that one right there, yes. Slide 18.
Okay. So the next two slides, this one and the next one are going to be on your pension and It requires us to record on the long-term liabilities, your total pension liability or net pension liability. The city currently is booking in the rate at 7.15%. So that's at CalPERS, and based on their actual, but it's actually 7%. Could they bill 1.5% administrative fee? And Katie's texting Mayor. Let's see, maybe I should. I don't have background on. Can I call him or turn off your background?
Why it is in your background, so I'm thinking that maybe that's what's causing it. It's taken up some bandwidth.
Oh, hang on, let me, um, let's see if I can, oh, I don't know how to do that. How they set that in there? I don't think, I think it's just the weather. We have really bad weather tonight, had a lightning storm. Um, let me see.
Okay.
Let me stop sharing, I'll reshare.
Vanessa, did you turn off your camera? Maybe that's another approach. Or maybe we lost her. Can you hear me, Vanessa?
Let me call Katie on here. I'll call.
Who's going to maybe, hi, this is Anthony from AGP Video. He's going to maybe suggest that Vanessa call in on her phone. And that might have a better signal.
Call in.
Can you hear me? I can hear you on my phone, but I don't know that anybody else can hear you. So they want you to, yeah. Let me text you the dial-in real quick.
Okay, what's, perfect, thanks. I'll do that.
You're coming through.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Am I coming through now?
Yeah, perhaps you might turn your camera off, Vanessa.
See if I can get, I only have two slides left, so. Let me see if I, oh, just turn the video off?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, very good, hang on. All right, we'll try that. We'll see if it's on my end or if it's on your end, sorry. So let, so the, sorry for, the, we were, we were doing really good. I think everybody's getting home from work at 6:30. Having a bad storm here tonight, wind and lightning. The next two slides are really the pension and accounting, accounting for the pension as well as for the city's OPEB liability. GASB 68, we record a long-term liability. The city is currently using CalPERS' actuary to determine that and using a current discount rate of 7.1, is really a 7% discount rate and a 0.15% administration fee is the number that is recorded on the city's, if you look under non-current liabilities there. And what we like to show here is essentially the sensitivity of any change in that discount rate and its impact that net pension liability would be. So if the CalPERS position made a change on that discount rate to reduce it by 1% to 6.15%, you can see that your, would go up to 39.9 million from 25. We don't anticipate a change in that direction at this time. The markets have been great. So faced and down to the 7% over several years. And so at this point, discount rate, if it was to go up 1%, which would be great, would reduce your liability from 25.5 million to 13.6. I just want to make sure everybody can hear me through this. Is the OPEB liability, and this is the funding, the net OPEB liability because of June 30, 2020. Your measurement date for this, for net pension liability is June 30, 2020, and your evaluation date was one year prior to that. So again, the actuary are back a year and are recorded at 2020. Current discount rate currently used for your OPEB is 5.3 million. And decrease that discount rate to 1.2, it would be around 6 million. If we were to go up 1%, it would be at 4.2. And if it went up, it would be at 6.2. We've gone over the audit results already. And any remaining required communications needed to discuss, there were no corrected or uncorrected statements. All adjustments were recorded, agreements with the management, and I think no significant deficiencies in internal control reporting. And with that, I'll take any, Katie says it's still breaking up.
Yes, can you hear me okay, Vanessa? You're intermittently breaking up back and forth there, but we'll try to go.
I'm not sure what's happening.
We'll go ahead and move to council questions, and perhaps I could start us off. First of all, thank you for the presentation. Let Mr. Poon know that we missed him, but we appreciate you being here virtually anyway, and thank him for that. Thank you for the work that you did. Can you still hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
That's cool. I can hear you, though, yeah.
Yeah, okay. First question to you is, this appears to be a very clean audit with no major management letter issues, and this has been, I guess, the trend for the last three or four years. And so my question is, I'm just curious with regard to the number of cities, and I know you do a large number of them throughout the state, maybe country. How often do you get major deficiencies or internal control issues?
You know, that's really hard to determine. We, the standards, you know, obviously require us to report to you what we deem to be reportable conditions, meaning that there is a deficiency that is either so great it would cause the financial statements to be materially misstated, or that we believe that it is so significant that we should bring it to the attention of those charged with governance. Governments have gotten a lot better, and software systems have gotten a lot better at tracking transactions. But I, my specialty is in distressed municipalities. And so there are municipalities that do end up with comments, and we know that the state has their high-risk audit program for local government. And so those cities often are the ones that if we are doing business with them, will end up with some type of findings and recommendations on their audit report. But there isn't really a percentage. And the other part of that equation that you have to contemplate is that your risk profile changes based on external factors and factors internally within the city. So each year, you could have either staff turnover, or there could be a major crisis like we had, or a new system implementation. And any one of those external factors could impact not only our risk assessment, but end up with findings and recommendations because something got missed through that process. So there isn't really a hard and fast rule. It's what's important is that risk assessment process that takes place at the beginning of the audit and the conversations with management as we're establishing the audit process. And then I think secondarily is having a strong finance team focused on setting good policy and internal control and having a good tone at the top by those charged with governance. And, you know, Moro Bay has that. And so it's a real pleasure to work on a non-distressed city, because I've had my hands full with some that are. But yeah, we run into it, it's the, you know, I would say Pareto principle in most cases. It's about an 80/20.
Got you, and thank you for that. And I, I know from your background, you have worked with distressed cities, and I know you were in Stockton. And so this is just a general question, and maybe you can bring it home and relate it to Moro Bay. Perhaps you could articulate, what are the, the top two or three or four issues in terms of financial trends that one begins to see in the early distress of the city that might become a city that ends up in bankruptcy?
That's a lengthy topic. They're all different. I can tell you on Stockton's bankruptcy, we hired people to come to work for us that had gone through the Vallejo bankruptcy. And they are two substantially different bankruptcies. One was related to bargaining unit commitments, and ours was a combination of some bargaining unit commitments as well as long-term obligations that weren't sustainable over time. And really, that comes down to the decision-making of council at the advice of staff that you're making spending and policy decisions and spending. So, you know, they're, they're different. Even Detroit was different, and Puerto Rico is substantially different. But I think the most important is that you have financial transparency when you're making decisions, and that you are looking, you've got detailed reports and detailed analysis that's going into that. And I know Katie and Sandy are looking at those when they bring those items to council. And so that's really an important process. We don't necessarily look at that as part of the audit. We do look at trends. We look at trends and funds to see if there's any risk or issues within their foregoing concern. It is a requirement as part of our audit that we need to alert you in advance of you, of any kind of fiscal distress. So the auditor should be, it's going to be an interesting year coming this next year to see how agencies are going to survive through the pandemic.
Great.
And I should say, not only the pandemic, but the shutdowns.
And the shutdowns as well. Yes. With regard to the net costs of services to tax revenues, is there a range or a percent that you consider to be a goal to shoot for or something that's ideal with regard to cities?
I'll pull that slide back up.
We're at 132, but I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I've seen them a lot. I've seen them at a much different ratio than this when going into fiscal distress. And I think what's important here that we don't really take into account is that you have some one-time hits related to COVID that are in here. There isn't a tried and true number for that, but we, you know, obviously, if I was to say 100%, that means that your net cost of services are being covered by your tax roll. And I think that's really an important concept to know, you know, but then again, your tax roll is subject to voter approval for sales tax and property tax, obviously, is related to the market. So, and turnover of properties. And I know there's, you know, legislation and ballot measures that are going through on, on property tax. So we may see some changes in that in the near future. But that's just an indicator to look at. Obviously, one, a one, a one-times ratio is probably the best because, you know, you're covering your cost of services. But slight fluctuations in various directions is, is not alarming in any sense, because you may be making some investments in those years.
Indeed. It would be a fair statement to say that with the passing of Measure E or one cent sales tax, which will bring significant revenues to the city, that there would be an expectation that that number would move more lower, more towards the 100 percentile range.
Yes, we would hope.
Okay, we would hope.
Yeah, we would hope.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I just wanted to make that point. And so just to ask you a little bit about CalPERS, that's always the issue. You know, current discount rate, 7% with the admin charge of 0.15, and our exposure there, 25 million. And my question is, are you hearing anything from a policy standpoint and/or from CalPERS with regard to potential for moving that? from CalPERS with regard to potential for moving that discount, discount rate down? Because obviously that would have significant implications on our unfunded liability. Just wondering what you're seeing out there hearing?
No, we're, we're, I'm not seeing it in CalPERS that they're making. Obviously, the stock market recovered very significantly. I think we saw what? A thousand point, a thousand, a thousand point decline in the last month, but it's been well over 31,000 even post-election, post-confirmation and certification. And so I don't see that changing. The housing market is, is growing still. And I think we're looking at what are people doing as residents? People are learning to migrate. I think we're going to see some changes if COVID and remote working occurs. Are people going to be moving into different states? And how is the, the state going to handle some of that? As well as, I, I know I'm in Sacramento and we're having a large influx of Bay Area residents coming because they can work from home now. So they can buy an affordable house, have good schools and still work and receive Bay Area wages. So we're not going to know how this thing's going to play out for several years, but I think the market right now and where the actuary has the rate is consistent with the long-term rates of return.
Okay.
I don't perceive a change there. Again, it's, I'm not an actuary. So we really want them to be the expert.
That, that, that's encouraging. My last question is this with regard to general fund, emergency reserves and, and I've heard quoted before from Mr. Poon, you know, that, that average level out there in communities of about 16, 17%. In your opinion, is there a healthier number? Or is that the goal one would want to shoot for as a city? Or as you know, by policy is 25 to 28%. But I'm just curious in your experience, what you're seeing and perhaps what you might recommend?
Yeah, it's a definitely, it's a policy decision and there are several components within your 3.3 million where you're setting aside some of that for vehicle and capital accumulation and project accumulation for infrastructure. And that's a long-term look, right? To determine how much of that set aside is needed for long-term funding. Your emergency reserve and your operating fund reserves total around 2.3, almost 2.4 million. So it's the majority of that versus the, the set asides for vehicle and capital, which council has the ability to, you know, basically move that back into emergency reserves as needed, but then is making a policy decision to change where to spend the dollars. But overall, you know, 16.67, there's a, an article that's out on, on unassigned fund balance that was done, a study. And you know, that's really just GF Way's baseline recommendation. And they do point out in their best practice that that is a policy decision and it could move up depending upon the city. Some cities are high-growth cities, some are, are not high-growth cities and are losing citizens and population. And so that number can change depending upon your service level needed. A high-growth city might need something higher with their higher demands for police and fire. So it varies. Again, there's, that's the wonderful part of being a city auditor is I get to see so many different cities and so many different models and every place is different. It's, it's drive for fees and revenue is different and looks different is what makes this exciting to be in this industry. I think you're at a, a good level, but I think as any pandemic like this extends out for a number of years, it's something to pay close attention to when you're making your policy and budget decisions, which you're on the verge of getting ready to pass next year's budget.
Absolutely. Well, good. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And I'm going to turn it over to my other council members. Councilmember Heller, what questions do you have, sir?
I have no questions. Great report and always good to hear the good news, all things considered. So no questions from me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir. And Councilmember Davis, sir, questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton, any questions?
No questions. Just a thank you for the educational aspects of this. It's always interesting to hear the, what an auditor sees versus what a regular person sees. And so I've appreciated your comments on the other cities and the, the kinds of difficulties they can get into.
Great. Thank you. And Councilmember Addis, questions?
My main question was to Moro Bay staff, just about long-term planning for sea-level rise and climate resiliency and how it would be planning long-term with our budget. So it wasn't specifically about this report and it sounds like all of that is a work in progress along with our general plan. But I did want to comment what a pleasure it is to see that Moro Bay is still earning awards. And I want to thank all of the staff that worked on this, that have been working on our budget, because I remember being on CFAC and there were findings with this audit and there were things that had to be corrected. And I believe my first year on CFAC was the last year of findings. And ever since then, there's been awards and things have been just continually improving. And I'm glad to see that that momentum has continued even with the change in staff. And so I just want to say thank you and thank you for the work of the Poon Group for, for doing this for us. It's very helpful.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Appreciate that. So with that, we will go ahead and move to public comment. This is public comment for item C dash one on the agenda. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this item, please do so now by either raising your hand. If you're calling in by phone, be sure to press nine. Or if you're on the Zoom link, please use the raise hand feature. So public comment is open for item C one. And Anthony, any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I do see Betty Winholz with her hand raised. Okay, Betty.
Okay.
muted you.
Thank you. This is.
Welcome, Betty.
This is Betty Winholz. I just have two questions and they're more affirmations to make sure I didn't misunderstand. For the auditor, I believe I heard you say that your report does not comment on either effectiveness or efficiency in terms of the use of our monies. And then my second one was that either a report and/or you will be back by the end of the month regarding our business side of our funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Next public comment, Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, thanks. I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back and just ask staff and/or Vanessa if you want to comment about the question of the report not commenting on effectiveness or, excuse me, effectiveness or efficiency of money. And I'm not sure what that was referring to, but.
I'm, I'm happy to address the audit. So it is not a performance audit. That actually falls under the Yellow Book standards, which would look at the effectiveness and efficiency of spending of programs or things like that. That would be a separate type of audit engagement under our professional standards. This is an audit of the financial statements. It's a financial statement audit that's governed by generally accepted auditing standards and the government auditing standards in the Yellow Book, but under the financial statement section. We look at internal controls and we look at those for purposes of planning our procedures to perform the audit on the account balances. If something we saw was, if there was an internal control design that we felt was ineffective in preventing or detecting a material misstatement in the financial statements, we would bring that design flaw to those, to this in the single audit report as a financial statement finding over internal controls, over financial reporting. But we, this is not a performance audit. We do not perform a performance audit for the city. It is something we can do. We're capable of doing it and we have performed them in the past. We just aren't engaged to do that for City of Moro Bay.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. And the comment regarding whatever you might be doing at the end of the month, I don't know if you caught that, but are you coming back or Katie?
I can hop in here. We're required to make submissions of the single audit to the federal government by the end of the month and we will do that. We've also already provided the transit funding audit to RTA, no. Yeah, I think it was RTA. Yes, for our transit audit. So we've already made that submission. So it'll be, the report will be finalized and posted to the website and submitted as appropriate. We won't be coming back to the council for any additional action.
Okay, great. Thanks for answering that question. I appreciate it. That ends this item. This is a receive and file. And I just wanted to again reiterate some of the comments that have been made. First, Katie, as an interim director for us, we really appreciate how you've stepped in, assisted through this audit, but I also know that you give gobs of credit to your staff. And so I want to recognize them, especially Sandy in her lead role. I know you've described her as superwoman and I think that's probably true. And I just wanted to echo your comments and my thanks, not only to Sandy, but to the remainder of your staff as well. We really appreciate that. And also thank the Poon Group for your excellent services. It's been, in my now, almost eighth year on council. I think you've been with us, what, five years, six years? But anyway, the group has and we've just had a really good relationship and I appreciate the professionalism of your group and, and the work that you do. And just wanted to thank you for that. Again, I'm, I'm really excited about the fact that this is an award-winning group of individuals here that has been recognized for comprehensive annual financial report annually. And, and we are just so pleased to see that happen. When I first got on council, the audit was not clean. The management letter contained a number of structural issues, policy issues that had been addressed by staff. And I'm so pleased to see those continuing to be corrected and for us to, to get and receive a, a clean audit. And that should give the community some reassurance that there's excellent transparency in the job that you and your staff are doing. And, and the work of our policy design is beginning, I believe, to pay off in terms of what we're seeing for our audits. And so any other comments by council members before we move on to the next item? Yes, Katie?
One last thing.
Yes.
I also wanted to thank the Poon Group for the years of service they've provided. It is a best practice to go out for bid periodically. And we are out on the street right now with a new scope of work, but they've been with us, I believe, for seven years. And I think seven is a lucky number. And so at this point, just wanted to give our thanks. It's, it has been a little bit of a rocky road this year. Not only because of my transition into the spot and I think we've all had some growing pains associated with this engagement on both sides of the, I don't even know what, we're not on sides, but on, on the different areas of expertise, let me put it that way. But I did want to thank the Poon Group for their service to the city. And as you and other council members have acknowledged, we've come a long way in the last seven years. And a lot of that credit goes to the staff who've been here over the years. And Sandy is one of those leaders. So again, I just wanted to take that opportunity to thank the Poon Group and Sandy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you, Katie. Also, Mr. Collins, thank you for your leadership and oversight. We appreciate you as our city manager. And Vanessa, again, thank you for your work and our best to Mr. Poon.
Thank you so much.
With that, if there are no other comments, that will conclude item C dash two. And we will move on to, excuse me, C dash one. We will move on to item C dash two. This is business item C two, water reclamation facility project review and approval of change order. And I will turn this over to, I believe, either Mr. Casares or Mr. Leibig, but I think Mr. Casares is with us.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, the public, Eric Casares, the WRF Program Manager. I've got a brief presentation here. Well, first of all, thank you for having me here this evening to present on item C two. I have a brief presentation that I've prepared and then we can go through and I can answer any questions after, after I get through this here. So one second. Okay, great. Again, thank you for having me here to present item C two, which is for the water reclamation facility. Tonight, we're going to be talking about a few potential change orders for the design build component of the water reclamation facility project. This evening, staff recommends the city council approve and authorize the city manager to sign amendment number five to the existing amended agreement with Fülons Black and Beach, our design build team, for a total credit value of $195,945. As we've gone through this exercise a few times, we've bought, brought groups of change orders to the council for consideration. And just want to take a quick moment and go through the, kind of the chain of activities that happen when we have a potential change order. So first, what is a potential change order? It is a suggestion change to the, to the water reclamation facility. When that change is identified, that really starts the, the potential change order process. The next step is we determine if that change is a material change in the already agreed upon scope of work for the design build team. We look at that change and have the design build team develop a raw order of magnitude cost that we look at and consider. If it's something that is, maybe that could be considered optional to the project, we might look at that raw order of magnitude cost and determine, you know, this is a want for the project. Let's look at that raw order of magnitude cost and determine if it makes sense to move forward. Once we review that raw order of magnitude cost, we get together as a group and make the decision to move forward or to not move forward. If we make the decision to move forward, then the design build team develops the draft PCO, which includes cost detail for the change. That draft PCO is reviewed in detail by the program management team and the construction cost estimators at Corolla. We discuss any comments that arise from our review and we develop a final PCO and we negotiate the final cost for that PCO. So this evening, we're asking council to consider a total of two potential change orders, the total cost impact of which is a credit of about $196,000. We are looking at a cost increase component of about $273,000. And we paired that up with a, a credit of about $469,000. So in summary, adoption of the PCOs would increase the remaining contingency for the WRF component of the project to approximately $810,000. This table here summarizes the impacts to the WRF contingency since we negotiated the original agreement with the design build team back in October of, of 2019. So on the column on the left, we have the different phases of the agreement. So we started with the original agreement, which had a guaranteed maximum price of just over $67 million. Amendment number one was a, had a value of about 1.6 million. And you can see that contingency column on, kind of over to the right-hand side of the screen, has continued to come down. You may note that we had a contingency revision as a, as a result of amendment number three. We asked council at that time to authorize us to add about $2.9 million of additional contingency into the project to cover a set of PCOs associated with amendment number three and also provide us some additional contingency for the remainder of the project. Amendment number four, the contingency went down to about $615,000. And with the approval of the PCOs here this evening, that contingency amount would increase to about $810,000. So the first PCO that we're going to consider this evening is PCO number 58, which is the permanent exclusion fencing. Oh, excuse me. In order to discuss the first PCO that I'm going to present tonight, I need to refresh your memory on PCO. your memory on PCO number 58. So everybody can remember back about a year ago, or a little more than a year ago, when we negotiated the biological opinion with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service regarding the California red-legged frog, and one of the results of that biological opinion was that we were required to erect a wildlife exclusion fence along the east side of the water reclamation facility site. And that fence consisted of a, about a five-foot-high concrete wall with a lip. It's embedded about three feet into the ground and sticks up about two feet, and on top of that would be affixed a chain-link fence with privacy slats. That change order was part of that amendment number three that I discussed earlier, and that amendment alone, or excuse me, that PCO alone had a cost of about $856,000 to it. So that was approved last year by city council. This figure here shows a number of the different fencing materials that we have for the facility site, but I will direct your attention, if you can see my cursor here, I think you can. What we're talking about impacting this evening is the wildlife exclusion fence, which is essentially this aqua line here, and then really this purple line here, which consists of the concrete stem wall with the chain-link fence on top of it. So that was PCO 58, which was previously approved by council as part of amendment number three. This first segment of the fence that's been highlighted here, you can see it flashing green, that really remains unchanged. That's just a five-foot-high concrete wall that we're going to leave there. No changes to that segment of the wall. This segment that's here in yellow is the segment that we have, we are discussing here tonight, which is the longer segment, which is the concrete wall with the chain-link fence on top of it. So what I'm going to present now is PCO number 84, which is essentially an alternative to that concrete wall and chain-link fence design that was approved previously by U.S. Fish and Wildlife back in 2019. So everybody can remember back when we were dealing with the biological opinion, we were trying to move through that quickly, and we proposed an exclusion barrier that had been used on other projects that we thought the U.S. Fish and Wildlife would be able to approve quickly, and they did so. However, over the last year, we've had some time to think a little bit, and went through kind of a value engineering exercise and said, you know, this is almost the single-largest capital PCO that we've dealt with on this project. It is the single-largest capital PCO. Is there anything that we can do to make this PCO more cost-effective, or make this wildlife exclusion barrier more cost-effective? So we went through and worked with the construction team and came up with an alternative, which is essentially a chain-link fence that will have an H D P E layer bonded to it that'll sit a couple of feet above grade and three feet below grade, that essentially accomplishes the same purpose as that concrete section of wall. We asked the EPA if they would consider bringing this alternative to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. They said they would. We presented that information to them, and on January 6, 2021, we received a letter from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to EPA approving our revised design. That revised design results in a savings of $469,000. So it really brings the cost of the fence, if you consider, go back here real quickly, the original cost of the wall was about $856,000. We take off about $469,000 of that, so the end up, the exclusion fence goes from about $850,000 to about $400,000, if my math is correct there. So that was the first PCO. That is a credit. So it's interesting, I should have mentioned this before, the two PCOs that we are presenting here tonight are essentially modifications or reversals to previous PCOs that have been brought to council and approved. So the first one was the more expensive exclusion fence and a more cost-effective solution to the exclusion fence. The second one is really a reversal of PCO number 62. PCO 62 was also part of amendment number three. At the time, we had a number of PCOs that we were bringing to council, and we were looking at ways to try to offset some of those cost increases, and one of those things that we identified was changing some of the conduit materials throughout the facility. And I've got to credit my construction manager, Steve Mamiaga, on this. When he came on board and we started construction, we started looking at the conduit materials that had been impacted by PCO 62, and decided that maybe we'd swung the pendulum a little bit too far, and that we should probably swing it back and put some of the beefier conduit materials back into the real process areas of the facility. Those areas of the facility are highlighted in yellow here, essentially covers the headworks, the main secondary treatment portion of the plant, the solids handling portion of the plant there with the sledge holding tanks, and the de-watering area, and then also within the ROUV building. So what we had done with that previous PCO 62 is we had taken a large quantity of what we call OCAL, or it's plastic flexible, or plastic-coated flexible conduit, and we replaced that material with galvanized rigid conduit. And so this is essentially switching that PCO back for the vast majority of the conduit that we had changed previously. Again, the benefits of this solution is it really adds, it's going to add longevity to the conduit in the facility, and it really is in line with typical practices for a wastewater treatment facility like this. So again, we recommend here this evening that the city council approve and authorize the city manager to approve amendment number five with the DB team for a total credit of $196,000. And with that, I can answer any questions. Oh, really quickly, before we get into questions, I did want to mention, we did present these PCOs to the Public Works Advisory Board back in February. The recommendation coming out of P WAB was that the council should approve these PCOs, or their recommendation was to approve. There was some concern about the PCO associated with the wildlife exclusion fence, since we are going away from concrete to an H D P E material that may have a little bit of a shorter life. What are kind of some of the long-term costs for replacement of that fence? And the material costs themselves were less than $100,000, and based on input from Mr. Miller, the utilities manager, he indicated that in the future, his staff, his operations and maintenance staff would have the skill set to be able to replace that exclusion material if needed in the future. Now I can entertain any questions.
Great. Thank you, Eric. Very much appreciate your presentation, and I'll go ahead and open it up for council questions. If, we can start with council member Davis, sir, any questions for Eric?
No, I have no questions. Thank you, Eric.
All righty, then. Council member Barton, any questions?
No questions, but I'd like to thank Eric and the other members of the team for thinking along these lines, looking for ways to make savings on the project.
Great, thank you. Council member Addis, questions?
I don't have any questions, but I want to reflect what council member Barton said, that I'm very glad that we have a PCO that looks like it's giving money back, and that are at least reducing the cost, getting a credit, and I remember seeing the cost on this item and thinking it was too high, so I very much appreciate staff working hard on that and getting us that credit.
Great, and thank you. And council member Heller, sir, questions?
No questions for me. I echo what everyone has said. I'm glad that the team has realized that frogs are probably not going to jump higher than two feet. I appreciate them going back to the agencies with a more reasonable solution, and glad to, obviously glad to see a credit PCO for a change, so thank you.
Great, thank you. I would echo the comments that have been made, and don't have any questions myself. With that, I will go ahead and open up public comment for item C dash two on the agenda. This is public comment for item C two. Information on how to access Zoom and/or call-in is on the screen. And Anthony, I'll open up public comment. Any callers at this time?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Betty Winholtz has her hand raised?
Yes. Welcome, Betty.
Okay, you should be unmuted.
Okay. Welcome, Betty.
Betty Winholtz?
Yes.
I have a procedural question, I think, in, I have two questions. The first one is procedural. When Mr. Casares says that the team, or we decide to move forward, who are the voices involved in deciding who moves forward? Is that him and the city manager, or him and Mr. Leibig? I'm just wondering who's in on the decision-making? And my second question is, since you're going to a cheaper material than the concrete to hold up the fence, how often, you said that it will be cheaper and that you think we can afford to do it for less, but how often will that fencing have to be, or the foundation have to be replaced over the 30-year life of the plant? And to what extent does it change, or does it impact the visual of the scenic highway one? Thank you.
I didn't, I unmuted myself. Any other further public comment, Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Thank you so much. With that, I will close public comment and ask Eric if you could address the procedural question that Ms. Winholtz had about who the "we" are that decides to move forward?
Yeah, so it really, it is at the staff level, and depending on the magnitude of the item that we are considering, or maybe the necessity of the item that we're considering, it could include, it nearly almost includes Mr. Miller, the utilities manager, and Mr. Leibig, the city engineer. If it's a larger PCO that we would be considering, then we would bring that to city manager potentially and say. So a good example would be, we've identified that we would like to include this. It may not be a necessity, but it does carry a price tag of, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. Before we committed any time to looking at that further, that would be something that we would bring to Mr. Collins to discuss and get his input. I do want to note that really until the PCOs are approved by council, doesn't commit the city to any additional cost. If we do decide to take it through and develop the draft PCO, there is some effort that's expended on the program management in the city side of doing a review of those, of those cost estimates that are developed. But I would say that in the vast majority of cases where we've decided to have the design-build team develop a draft PCO, we have almost always brought that to council for approval. So we haven't had the design-build team run off and generate a bunch of draft PCOs that they've had to spend time developing, and we've had to spend time reviewing. We typically don't get to that stage unless we're pretty sure that it's something that we're going to take all the way to P WAB and then to council.
Good, thanks for that. And then the other question, how often will the fencing perhaps have to be replaced over, and Ms. Winholtz said the 30-year life of the facility, I assume the life of the facility is going to be much longer than that, but you can, I'll let you answer that, and then how often might we have to replace that fencing?
Sure. So I would make a quick clarification, the term cheaper was used, I would say more cost-effective rather than cheaper, but the, we've spoken with the manufacturers, and we've gotten seven-year warranties for that material. So if you look at that and compare that to, and that's what the manufacturer will commit to in terms of warranty, and you compare that to concrete potentially, which concrete has, typically when we're looking at concrete, we assume a life of 50 years as a number, it could be quite a bit longer than that. So we know we can get a seven-year warranty for the material. We think that the material will actually have quite a bit longer life than that. So over the course of 30 years, I would say that that might be, that material might be replaced twice. Right now, that the cost of the material itself, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I said it's somewhere between 50 and $100,000, and this PCO is reflecting a current savings of about $450,000. So that gives the, a sense of magnitude in between the upfront capital outlay and what might be needed for replacement in the future. The second part of her question in regards to visual impact, I would say that there would be no change to the visual impact. What would have been seen with the previous PCO from Highway One, as I mentioned, would be about a three-foot-high concrete wall with chain-link fence, with slatted chain-link fence on top. Now it's going to be essentially that same slatted chain-link fence, but that bottom three feet will just be, it will be a black H D P E material. So a black color versus a gray concrete color.
I just want to add that it's highly unlikely that the city will be required to replace all of the wildlife exclusion barrier at one time. It's probably going to occur based on UV exposure and kind of mechanical, if it gets run into, or something causes it to fail. Likely that's not going to happen around the entire perimeter at one time. And the H D P E doesn't provide a foundation for the fence. It's sitting in front of the fence, so it's not supporting the chain-link fence on top of the H D P E.
Thanks, Rob. Appreciate that very much. And that concludes questions and comments, and I will bring it back to council and entertain a motion for C two.
I move to approve staff recommendation.
Okay.
Motion by council member Davis to approve the staff recommendation for item C two, seconded by council member Addis. Any further comments or discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and do a rule call vote, please.
Council member Addis?
Yes.
Council member Barton?
Yes.
Council member Davis?
Yes.
Council member Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five o.
Great. Thanks again, Eric and Rob and staff for this. It's always great to get a credit, and we appreciate your hard work in making that happen, and thanks for your presentation tonight.
Thank you very much.
But, and that ends item C two, our business, last business item. Move to item D, council declaration of future agenda items. Any future agenda items? Hearing none, I will close item D and adjourn the meeting. The next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021, at 5:30 PM via teleconference. Thank you, good evening, be safe and be well.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.